We'll let you in.
But I'm not too worried.
That's our new, that's our new security. Who's got the clicker?
They should the chair have a clicker too.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meetings. Today is a very special day. I'm thinking we should swear in the sheriff more often. I feel very safe this morning. I've never seen so many uniformed officers since a parade. So it's good to have you all here. You know, the very first thing on our item is we will stand and pledge allegiance, have a moment of silence, then we're going to swear in our newly elected officials. And before we do that, I would like to give each of them an opportunity to introduce their family or special guests that they have here today. And so at this time, if you would please rise and join me in our nation's salute to our flag and remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready? Salute. Thank you. Please be seated. Again, we have our elected officials. Some have actually already been sworn in because they were required to constitutionally. And I'll just start. Sheriff Bill Whitman, if you'd like to introduce your family members. You can use the microphone there if you'd like to do that.
First, everybody here is my friends and relatives, so I don't want to get in the way of the day. But I did want to raise my own shirt out.
Thank you, Bill. Rita Woodard, our auditor, collector, various things.
Elections.
Elections, enough of good elections.
And elections, yes. Actually, I was one of the ones who constitutionally needed to be sworn in on the third, so this is reenactment for me. And my family's not here today because they were there then. But I do have some wonderful staff here who I could not do the job without, and I really appreciate them very much. And a lot of friends here. Thank you.
Roland Hill is our new assessor and clerk recorder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everybody. I'm Roland Hill. And I, like Rita, we were sworn in last week, so our function was then, and so I don't have any family here this morning. I would like to introduce our new Assistant Assessor, Mr. Tim Mathis. Tim was appointed as of last Monday, so welcome, Tim. And I think the board and staff will find him a very good, very good member of our team, so thank you very much.
And our District Attorney, Mr. Phil Klein.
As the senior elected official. Two are kind of, more ways than one. We always have a special thing in our office where I get sworn in by a judge, and then I turn, in turn, swearing all of the deputy district attorneys in our office. And that's a time for our families, so that was done last week. But I do appreciate the invite, come over here. And I have my Assistant District Attorney, Shaney Jenkins here. Shaney, wave if you're here. And my Chief Investigator, Rob French.
Mr. Ennis, you're up next.
Yes, I'd like to introduce my wife, Diane, who is here this morning, and my mother-in-law, Shirley Warden. Appreciate them coming over for my boring answer. Thank you.
Oh, I have a cast of thousands this morning. I have my mother-in-law, Lorraine Burt, my mom, Anita Worthley, my wife, Vicki Worthley, my daughter, Elizabeth Worthley, my son, William Worthley, and my niece, Bethany Millet. Thank you. So I'm happy to have them here and some great supporters and friends who are here also. And thank you for being here this morning. Just, there's been a request to have a picture of all the electeds before we all take off during the break time, so after we're sworn in, if you could remain. And then there's also been a request by Mr. Cox, if we could just do our supervisor moments before we actually have our break and we'll have some refreshments. So at this time, if Mr. Ennis and I will go down to the well and ask Judge Melinda Reed to come forward. Melinda is the presiding judge, and we're very happy to have her here this morning to swear us all in. Thank you for being here, Judge.
All right, elected officials, your first official act here. Raise your right hands and be sworn. Repeat the oath of office after me, please. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. That's it. Congratulations, Michelle. She's handing them their certificates of election, and we sincerely congratulate all of you. Thank you very much for your hard work and service. Thank you.
Again, before we take our break, we're going to do our supervisor matters. And while they're leaving, I would like to point out, one of the reasons we've had a little difficulty here, this is, we've, a couple of years ago, we did some assessment of our security in our facility and found it to be somewhat lacking. And so recently, we have just concluded a process here of putting this wall across the front before people had the access to walk right up to the dais, and our clerk feels much safer now. And we actually have bulletproof space in front of us that'll stop a .44 Magnum weapon, so we're feeling a little more secure in light of the events of the last few days. It's good to have those security measures in, but it takes us a while to kind of work. This is our first time that we've actually met since these works have been done. So at this time, we will take up our board matters before we take our break. I'll start on my left with Mr. Vanderpoel.
Well, first of all, I'd just like to thank everyone for coming today and wish everyone a wonderful 2011. I hope it's a great, healthy year for everyone. Couple of things that I have that I want to make mention of this week. Thursday, the Delano Early Mart Irrigation District is going to be honoring the H.K. Nelson family, and of course, H.K. Nelson, who is really a pioneer in the water field down in the Early Mart, Delano area. So that'll be really exciting, and they've dedicated a monument in his honor in front of their building, so that'll be really nice to see that unveiled. And then also, we have a Tulare Fire Chief, Chief Mike Threlkelt, who's going to be retiring, or who did retire at the end of this year, and he had his formal ceremonies then, but he will have his public retirement this Friday, and that will be at 6:00 PM. So that's what I have to say today. Thank you.
Mr. Cox?
First, congratulations to all the elected officials who, I guess, weathered another election season and prevailed. We have step-up service learning grants for junior high schools that the board approved a few months ago. The deadline is actually this Friday at 5:00 PM. So if there are junior high schools putting those together, we need to make sure they remember that this Friday at 5:00 PM is the deadline, and the applications are timestamped. So we have had occasions in the past where they come in at 5:15, and they are rejected because they're too late. So please meet the 5:00 PM this Friday deadline for the junior high service learning grants. It's been so successful, the high schools. My last thing that I wanted to mention, and I've made copies for the board, I've worked with Mr. Forbes on our staff over the last several months, to put together a summary of what it takes to start the redistricting process. We know in the next couple of months, the census data will be released, so I've made, I'll hand the copies to the clerk, I've made copies for the board, the clerk of the summary, our county council and CAO, and I've, well, I've made a couple of copies for the press and the public here. So if I can hand those to the clerk, I think this board ought to be a little bit further ahead than we were 10 years ago, although that was 10 years ago, that we started the process the end of March in 2001. So I would like to ask the CAO with approval of the board to put together a short presentation and workshop within the next 30 days at a meeting to talk about the redistricting process, what our options are. The summary does a pretty good job of laying out the options, but I think it's better that we get ahead of this issue than behind it. We have till November 1st of this year to, so to speak, draw the lines in the sand. And so I would encourage our CAO to bring this to the board in the next 30 days, and just, I think, a five to 10-minute presentation will help get the board informed and moving along, looking at the other maps that were done in 2001, the different scenarios. It's amazing that they actually came up with the districts the way they are today. But I do think there are significant changes that need to be made. District 3, for one, has little, very little unincorporated communities in it, and I think we ought to give clear direction to those that are working on the process for us, that we'd like to see things evened out. With that, I will...
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, since our last meeting, as the old saying goes, there's been a lot of water under the bridge. With that water, we had tremendous response, and they did a very excellent job, our fire department, the chief, Sunderland, our RMA department, under Jake Raper. And the other thing that I've noticed, that we did a lot of cooperation with the cities, and the city staffs did an excellent job. We are in a lot better shape than we were during the last flood, which was about six years ago. And it showed that we're willing to work together. I had an occasion to request a backhoe from the city of Lindsay, and the backhoe was there within 15 minutes. So my hat's off to everyone who worked during the flood time, and you did an excellent job.
And I'd also like to echo that and thank all the county and city agencies that cooperated so well during this flood event. You're the one out in the trenches that made it possible, and also the people out there that got in and got the sandbags to protect themselves. So it was a collaboration, working between city, county, and the residents of Tulare County to make this a safer place for everybody. I just had a few little, I had a Laura Thule meeting yesterday, it is kind of bringing you up to date on why we had such an event. At Mountain Home, we had almost 16 inches of rain during the month. At Rogers Camp, we had 19 inches of rain. At Eagles Creek, we had 18.8 inches of rain. We had 16 inches at Hassick, and we had almost 10 inches at Lake Success. Lake Success started the month at 9,000 acre feet and finished the month at almost 43,000 acre feet. So you can see we had quite a bit of runoff. So there's, that's the reason why we had the event. This is probably the biggest rain event that we've had since 1966, when it went over the spillway at Lake Success. So this has been a very, very wet December. That's all I have.
And finally, just to say that after the meeting today, four of the board members will be going to Sacramento to meet with our new delegation. Obviously, there's been an election that has also changed the faces of people in Sacramento. We want to get up there and speak with them about concerns concerning Tulare County. And one final note on the water situation is that the cooperative effort was not extended, limited to just the city and the county, but also included special districts. The irrigation districts did a wonderful job, but without their canal systems, which were not designed for flood control, they are at our de facto flood control mechanisms during these times, and they work very hard, as do Caltrans, keeping bridges and abutments clear. And really, we really came out of this very well, very limited amount of damage for the amount of water, record amount of rain for December fell in Tulare County. And Pine Flat, which is, the Kings River went from 300,000 acre feet to over 600,000 acre feet in the course of that storm event. So thank goodness for those dams and the protection they provide for us. And locally for us, on my, on a creek that is very affects my area, Sand Creek, the county put a dam in there in the 1970s before we had all the environmental constraints, and without that dam, I know we would have had much more serious flooding in the Cutler-Rosi, Dinuba areas. So my hat's off to all the agencies and the people who stepped up and helped, and we did weather the storm very quite well. At this time, we're going to take about a 15-minute recess, so we'll have an opportunity. There's some, we have refreshments at the back, behind the uniformed officers, they're always protecting the donuts and the cookies. We'll get back up here about 25 till. Thank you very much for being here. I'm mindful of the fact that gaveling this meeting back to order is one of my last official actions as the chairman of the board. I did want to make a few comments before we do the next item on our agenda. It would be an understatement to say that 2010 was a difficult year in county government and in all governments. We've seen, again, reductions of revenue coming from our internal sources, our property tax, sales tax, vehicle license fees, and of course, the bigger hit from the state of California, from which we derive much of our funding, especially in the health and human services arena, but also in public safety. And there's really no part of the county government that's not touched by state government and its finances. And so I am very, very pleased to say that in spite of the difficulties we have encountered, I have a very good feeling, I think each of the board members also, about the condition of our county financially, and even more importantly, I think, from the standpoint of our personnel. Our Health Human Services Agency has done a wonderful job of having to deal with very difficult times. And John Davis, the executive officer, executive officer, I just gave you, that's not, there's no reason for that promotion, but who heads that division, has worked very diligently to, again, provide those services that are so important to our citizens, even with declining revenue. And his people who work under him and with him have done a tremendous job, and I want to thank them. This has been a banner year in some respects because of the poor economy for some areas of county government. And the silver lining, I think, is in our road department and our regional projects, where we've been able to deliver projects at prices that astound us even today, as far as being back in the 19, early 80s prices. And because of that, we've been able to do so much more work. We're going to have a report later on today about our overlay projects. But when you look at the overlay projects, the road maintenance projects, and our regional projects, I don't know that there's been this much work done in Tulare County, I'm sure, in the last three decades. And this is, of course, opportunistic. It doesn't happen all the time. Some of this was ARA funding from the federal government, some with state bond funds, and we know the state is still in financial difficulties. We don't know how much more of those funds we'll be seeing in the future. But this has been a tremendous year in transportation systems for Tulare County. Our loop bus system, Phil Cox is sort of the father of that system, providing transportation to our children in outlying areas, bringing them into meaningful programs in Visalia and other places, continues to expand and to grow. The ridership has just gone up dramatically. In public safety, we've been able to hold the line as far as our budget concerns and limitations. I know we have openings that we've had to maintain, but we've been able to keep our allocation the same, pretty much, at the sheriff's office, fire department, probation department, public defender and district attorney. And of course, most of our resources go to those areas. But one area in particular, I think, is very important for our communities, especially unincorporated communities, and that's our community-based officers. And the board this last year agreed and approved a grant from the federal government, which allows for CBOs to be in our communities, and I think that makes, is making a difference. I want to commend all of our departments, the other elected officials. I know many people have left the building, but the sheriff, district attorney, public defender, probation, RMA, ag department, I'm sure I'm leaving some out, but they've all done a tremendous job under very stressful times financially, of providing those services which are so important to Tulare County. And I want to thank this board, because I think this board and previous boards has done many, have done many things which have put us in a position today, which gives us financial stability that we watch many of our neighbors struggling with. And I'm speaking especially of our retirement benefits. We're, I believe, almost 92% funded in our retirement account. We have been able to maintain our system while others are watching theirs in very, very difficult situations. I'm not sure how they're going to work their way out of some of those situations. So I'm very pleased, I want to thank this, our county administrative officer, Gene Rousseau, and his staff, who work very, very diligently with the various departments, coming up with a budget. It was not an easy budget year again. We had 7% reductions to budgets. We've had to continue the furlough program. We've stopped, we've had to hold and freeze merit pay increases and step increases. And we're looking forward to this coming year, hopefully being able to lift some of those. We're hoping that our finances will allow us to be able to move forward again with our employees. They have been very patient. They work very, very well with us. We've had no contract problems with our negotiating teams. And so all in all, I believe this has been an extremely good year. And I just want to thank all of you who are here, and those of you who are listening, and to our, especially to our employees and staff for the hard work that they have done, and the fact that we are still viable and doing a job for Tulare County citizens, and are poised, I believe, to continue to do so in 2011. Now, at this time, it's time to have the changing of the guard, if you will, and so we will take up the election of the chairman and the vice chairman for the 2011 year.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make the motion that we nominate Supervisor Mike Ennis as the chairman for the 2011 year.
Very good. Second. We have a motion by Mr. Vanderpoel, seconded by Mr. Cox. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. At this time, I will hand the gavel over to my successor.
Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Chair, before he has too much to say, I'd like to nominate Supervisor Alan Ashida to be the vice chair.
Very good.
And I will second that nomination.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Vanderpoel, that Mr. Ashida be the vice chairman 2011. Votes are cast, and they are unanimous.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would like to thank Supervisor Worthy for his leadership over the last year as the chairman of this board, and keeping this board fiscally sound, and keeping everybody on the straight and narrow and moving forward. So Steve, at this time, I'd like to present you with this appreciation, your outstanding leadership as chairman of the board Tulare County. Okay, at this time, we will go to public comment. Anybody wishing to approach the board on issues, not on the agenda, but pertinent to the board? We have the Cutler-Rosi Chamber Veterans Active here today to talk on the American Veterans Traveling Tribute Wall, which Cutler-Rosi will be a lead bear apart. So if they'd like to come up and speak to that issue?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Board of Supervisors. Thank you for letting us come this morning. My name is Romelia Castillo, and I'm from the Oroza community, but I belong to Tulare County, as all of you do here. The reason that we're here, with me I have Mr. Martinez, Mr. Martinez, Mr. Martinez, Mr. Quintana, and Mr. Benavides. And the reason we're here is that I'm chairing the Veterans Parade for the Cutler-Rosa Chamber of Commerce. This is our 10th year. This is a big year for us. We also have Veterans Dinner, but this year, we're also bringing the traveling wall to honor our veterans here in the Central Valley. And the reason I'm here is to give you the invitation and also ask for your support. Every year, our supervisor, Steve Worthley, who I'm very proud to have as our board member here, he always gives us a donation to cover some of the expenses. Usually, it's under $6,000, but this year, we're going to need probably $12,000 or $14,000 because of the expense of the wall and other expenses that'll come with it, and that's why I'm here. And I'm not only asking District 4, but I'm asking District 1, 2, 3, and 5 to help. Because it's not about just the Cutler-Rosa veterans, it's about the whole veterans of the San Joaquin Valley. We will have a lot of people coming in to our community. We have reserved the Lead Better Park from the 1st of November to the 6th. The wall will be coming in on November 2nd to the 6th. On Thursday, we will have open ceremonies, and all of you will be invited. On Friday that evening, we will have our regular dinner at the Oroza Memorial Hall, continuing the following day, which is Saturday, our Veterans Day Parade, honoring our veterans, and then continue to the Lead Better Park for this wonderful tribute that we're paying to our veterans. And today, I have Raymond Quintana, who's going to say a few words on behalf of the veterans of the Central Valley.
Hello, my name is Ray Quintana, and first I'd like to say, to honor my friend Sergio Benavides, and Joel Martinez, both Vietnam veterans too. And Sergio was highly decorated. He won, he was awarded the Silver Star, the Bronze Star, and Purple Heart Vietnam. So, you know, mad to him. I'm speaking on behalf of the Central Valley Vietnam Veterans Association here in Visalia, and the VVA, Vietnam Veterans of America, Dinuba, Chapter 643. And I'm here to ask for your help. We need your support for this. We need your support for this big, big occasion. I have been to the wall. I've taken my sons to Washington DC, and it's a very touching, you know, it's very, it's a healing wall. You know, and we, all of us here, we have lost buddies in Vietnam, and friends from our hometowns. And so, I'm here just, you know, I'll make it quick, to ask for your support, and to thank you very much. You know, that's it.
Thank you very much. We'll all get together on this, and put our heads together, and see what we can do for you, because we know all our communities, we're touched by Vietnam, and we lost a lot of friends in our areas, too. So, thank you for coming this morning, and filling us in on this event that's coming up. Thank you. Looking forward to it.[647.82][647.82](pause) Okay, let's move to item number three. Receive a presentation on the goals and priorities of the 2010 Central California Children's Agenda. John?
Good morning, John Davis, Health and Human Services. Before I ask Janet Hogan to come up and make a presentation, I'd like to at least inform the board that there, she's heading a committee for the agency, and for the larger community, that is looking at child protection planning. It's actually trying very, our intent is to have a system that involves the community, and involves people in this community, and shares the responsibility for strong and healthy families throughout the county. And in that role, she's heading up a great number of your departments. We have probation in there, we have the agency, and all of the different departments we have working there, and we have education, as well as a great number of community-based organizations that are at the table, helping plan how child welfare services will be delivered. And we mean that in the largest sense, prevention, as well as the system we have in place with the courts. This piece is part of that, and I know it's very important to her in carrying out her responsibilities. Janet?
Good morning, I'm Janet Hogan, Executive Director of First Five Tulare County. Thank you for letting me speak to you today, and I will be brief. The Central California Children's Agenda is about the power of a clearly articulated vision for children and families, living in Kern County all the way up through San Joaquin County. And the vision simply stated, it is that this is a region that ensures a healthy and prosperous future for all our children and families. The agenda is designed to be an action framework with two broad goals. First, to promote better understanding of the needs for children and family among decision-makers such as yourselves. But it's also to facilitate collaboration among all of us working with children and families. Hopefully, you've seen a copy of the agenda, so you're aware that there are six topics organized developmentally, from communities being ready for children, to young adults prepared to successfully enter the world of work or further education, structured around outcomes, policy priorities, and strategies for each one of those topic areas. The agenda was developed under the auspices of the Central California Children's Institute. It's housed at Fresno State. The staff there provided leadership, they facilitated, they recruited a team of us from around the San Joaquin Valley to work on the project. And then, they did do a good job of getting representatives from throughout the region. As we came together, we pretty quickly coalesced an agreement around what the issues and needs of children are in the San Joaquin Valley. But I have to tell you, we had some very lively discussions about how to meet those needs. And our differences, if there were any, were not based on where we came from geographically, but where we came from professionally. And that was the power of this group, that we had public health nurses, we had K-12 educators, we had early childhood individuals such as myself. Nonprofits were represented, county agencies. It was quite diverse in that regard. So, over the course of a year, we truly did come together and form a very strong team that then was able to produce this agenda. We're now in the process, back in our own communities, of promulgating the agenda, seeking others to sign on and support what we feel is a very good statement for our valley. Here in Tulare County, the Children's Services Network, the City of Visalia Family Services, Tulare Youth Services have already endorsed the agenda. And later this month, we're looking to the City of Lindsay, the Lindsay Unified School District, and the Tulare Regional Medical Center to take the matter up. And we'll see, probably get a few more. The agenda embodies policies, partnerships, and investments. And throughout our development process, we were mindful of funding constraints that both public agencies and community organizations are facing. But it became clear to us that enhancing the policies and the partnership piece doesn't take more money, it takes a commitment to doing that, to participating together. And we don't expect investments to increase in the short term, especially after the governor's budget yesterday. We're realistic in that regard. But we do hope that this agenda contributes to conversations about how to be more efficient with whatever money there is, and how to work together, as John was describing, with our Child Protection Planning Committee, to look at whole systems, not just, this is the county's piece, and this is family services piece, but look at the entire system and how it can work well. Now, there is a bright spot in terms of the investments, and I'm pleased to be able to tell you about this. Our ability to come together as a region to work on these issues has caught the attention of two major foundations. The California Endowment, who actually helped fund printing, the agenda, and probably long-term, more importantly, the Packard Foundation, which has indicated a strong interest at a follow-up meeting in actually investing here in this region to promote and further the work of the agenda. So, we're very excited about that. That is new funding for us. So, overall, I think we're hoping and we're seeing that the agenda is sparking some thoughtful reflection on the part of individuals, and some really good conversations among those working with children, families, youth in the San Joaquin Valley. And I'm here today to ask you, as the Tulare County Board of Supervisors, to join us in this effort. Be happy to answer any questions, or respond to any specifics you might have had regarding the document itself.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I just have a comment. Jan, I, I thought this was a very comprehensive agenda, and I was really glad to see the, the various subject matter covered in the six priorities. Really glad to see healthy living as, as an aspect, glad to see that education is, is focused and on, and that we're working on the transition of youth from their childhood all the way up to preparation for the working world. And I think that with such a comprehensive agenda, and so many different people contributing to the formation of the agenda, I'm certainly very happy with what I see, and excited to offer my support as an individual supervisor for this agenda.
You also have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to move that we approve and endorse the goals and policy priorities of the 2010 Central California Children's Agenda.
That's second. Moved by Supervisor Worley, seconded by Supervisor Cox. All those in favor? It's unanimous, so thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if I can, while Janet's walking away, it's been a, a great privilege of mine to work on the First Five Commission with Janet for the last six years. And it's a commission in a group I'm very proud to be involved with. As you look at things like this, that come from the quality of people that we work with, it's just an amazing group of folks to work with. John Davis sits on the group. I'm not going to mention everyone's name, because I'll miss someone, and I'll be in hot water. But the, the efforts of our local people, and I'll say local, the, the entire San Joaquin Valley, in regards to children, I, I think we are just running at the head of the pack. Very proud to be involved with the First Five, and with the issues that, that we tackle.
I also feel that way, that it's a very, very good program, keeping these kids not only for education purposes, but for nutrition purposes. And with the high number of kids with diabetes today, number one thing is, is nutrition, and then education, too. So, very good program. Okay, let's move on to our consent calendar.[1160.58][1160.58](pause) Okay, we've got item, item 40.[1172.14][1172.14](applause) And item 14.
Pulled, right.
Have been pulled.
Mr. Chair, I would approve, or make a motion to approve the consent calendar, less items 40 and 14.
Moved by Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Worley. All those in favor? Vote is unanimous.[1194.92][1194.92](applause) Okay, and our items, not timed at this present time, item 42 has been pulled. So, we will now go to item 41, receive a report regarding asphalt contract overlay.[1210.78][1210.78](pause) Brett?
Thank you, Board. Brett Fussell, Assistant Director with the Resource Management Agency. And the item before you this morning is a report on the asphalt overlay projects that the county has conducted over recent times. This is a follow-up to a staff presentation that was made by Johnny Wong on December 14th, which was regards to roadwork that was being performed by county forces. And the comment was made, and the question was asked, well, what about the overlay, the contract work that, that county also performs? I'm going to be talking briefly about the asphalt overlay contracts that the county's been involved with, pretty much since the approval of the Safe, Accountable, Flexible, Efficient Transportation Equity Act, a legacy for users, or what we affectionately refer to as Safety Lou. The Safety Lou was the six-year federal transportation bill that provided money to the county for various projects, which was enacted back in October of 2005. I'm going to be talking about asphalt overlay projects that were funded not only from Safety Lou, but also from the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, or ARA, and Proposition 1B Streets and Roads Funding, which was a proposition that was on the 2006 ballot that provided funding for transportation projects in California. This, this amount of money was about $18 million that came to Tulare County, and I believe a comment was made earlier about the, you know, the funding that has flowed. That's, that's the end of that funding, that, that piece of legislation is now run out. So, we, by the time we complete the Road 108 project, we'll have spent all 18 million. In addition, as we were putting together our most recent project lists, we uncovered that we had still some Transportation Equity Act for the 21st Century, or T-21 money left lying around. It was about $100,000. And being federal money, it is very difficult to deliver a federally funded project, and that amount of money was really too small to do a project by itself. So, what we did is we combined it with another federal project. However, as sort of a sidebar in retrospect, we're kind of sorry we did that, because they don't know how to deal with money that comes from two different transportation bills. And trying to sort that out with Caltrans and the federal government on how to make that money flow was a complex discussion that probably took more than the money was probably worth.[1385.13][1385.13](laughter) It's complex. The first is the Safety Lou Farm-to-Market. We spent, the county spent about $2.6 million to do 5.5 miles of AC overlay. This work was done on Avenue 256 from Road 116 to Road 140, and Road 168, and diagonal 168, and Road 164 from Avenue 232 to Avenue 256. In addition to the Safety Lou money that was used on these projects, we also did a, sort of an experiment, if you will, and we received some supplemental funding from the state of California to do a rubberized asphalt concrete project, which was on Avenue 256. So, that was sort of a test for us. We're kind of monitoring that to see how that road stands up, because it's, it's a little bit different. We've actually did two sections of roadway, one with rubberized asphalt, and one with standard asphalt, so we can kind of compare what's, what's going to go on, to see if that's something that we might want to do in the future. And that was funded from the state as well. On the Proposition 1B Streets and Roads Fund, we spent about $3.7 million for 9.4 miles on Road 132 from Avenue 258 to Avenue 370, Road 152 from Avenue 96 to Avenue 112, Avenue 296 from Road 148 to Road 168, and Road 232 from Avenue 170 to Avenue 182. In addition, we did some over crossings and approaches to, at various locations on State Highway 99. The county is responsible for the surfacing of the over crossing itself. The structure is responsibility of the state, but we're responsible for the, for the riding surface over the top. In American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, we spent about $3.3 million, and this was on a single project. This was on Avenue 384 from State Route 99 to Road 80. And this project was supplemented by Safety Lou Farm-to-Market and T-21 Farm-to-Market Fund. This is where we spent the last $100,000 of the T-21 money. One of our strategies in spending this federal money is we try to overscope the project so that we make sure we use all of the federal dollars. And so, we end up with a, there's a, there's a, in the case of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, there was no mandatory match. But we wanted to make sure that we spent all the money, because we didn't want to risk either losing it, or having to go back and do a small project to spend it. So, we would overscope the project, and then use other sources of money to make that. And then, those monies come back to us if we end up underspending. So, in this particular project, you actually had a notice of completion on your agenda today. So, we'll go through the accounting and see where we're at, and see if we have anything left to spend. In addition, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, we spent $1.6 million for about 19.4 miles. And this was on Avenue 56 from Road 148 to 176, diagonal 134, Road 192 from Elk Bayou to Road 152, Avenue 232, Road 22 to Road 84, Avenue 56 from Avenue 400 to Avenue 432. And this project was supplemented by Prop 1B Streets and Road Funding, that had been set aside for AC overlays. So, in summary, over the life of, of Safety Lou, your board has spent $11.2 million to do approximately 41.1 miles of AC overlays within Tulare County. And with that, I would respond to any questions that the board may have.
Questions?
Mr. Chair, Brett, I have one question for you. I, I know that you gave the presentation in December, but, or Johnny did. What was the total amount of money between local projects, and then state and federal monies, that was spent on roads, and also the total amount of roads that were resurfaced or given attention? I mean, just so, for a comprehensive kind of outlook.
I don't, I, I don't have that number at my disposal. I do know that we receive, I think, like $18, $20 million in revenue that we would have spent. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what those numbers are. I don't have those at my disposal, but I'd get those for the board.
I, I was just thinking, roughly, we'd figure about 100 miles of resurfacing, I think, from that source.
I think that's what Johnny.
And then, and then we did this 41, and then there were some regional projects on top of that.
Right. This, again, this analysis doesn't include, or presentation doesn't include, the widening and the reconstructions that we're doing. And I believe I had commented that with the projects that your board has awarded since July or August of 2010 through December, your most recent award on Road 108 and the Great Separation Project is in excess of $35.5 million of widening and reconstruction work that's going on in the county.
Which was why I made the comment that it was a banner year for transportation, because I don't think we've spent that kind of money, and I don't know when, if they did, I suppose going back maybe 30 years ago, you might have. But, you know, and it's been a long time since we've had that kind of investment, and it's, and with, and with our, our measure, our, I mean, we can look forward, maybe not at this accelerated pace, but we will look forward to continuing to do our projects and making great progress. So, it's, it's really good to see these things happening.
The, we will be before you at your next meeting, requesting authorization to bid the Road 80 Phase 2 project, which is the segment that starts just south of El Monte Way or Avenue 416 in the City of Dunhuang, down to Avenue 384. And that's a $16 million project. That project is interesting from the standpoint that it was originally stip funded with state-only funds, but because of the budget problems at the state, there was some federal obligation still available, so they actually converted that project to a federal project. So, we had to go back and take a state-only project, which is relatively easy to deliver in the overall scheme of things, convert it to a federal project, and get it through the process. And we received what's, we often hear us refer to as an E-76, back on December 29th, which gave us then the authorization to proceed to bidding. So, we, and because of the state's timely use of funds policy, they give you six months So we, and because of the state's timely use of funds policy, they give you six months from the time the allocation is made, which is dated October 8th, in order to get that project under contract. So we're now aggressively pursuing the bidding process to get that project before you by no later than the middle of March for an award of contract to meet that timely use of funds. So that's another $16.2 million that we will be putting down, county.
Do you have a comment Supervisor Cox?
Question, or how much of this is in-house, Brett?
The physical work on the project is not done by in-house staff, the actual paving. However, in-house staff prepares the plans and specs and the estimates for the project.
So this 11-2 was all done by outside contractors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you Brett, it's, if you couple with that, all the chip seal that we do throughout the county, 41 miles doesn't seem like a lot when you've got over 3,000 miles of roadway, but I tell you, I said, no matter where I traveled in, throughout the districts this last year, I saw a lot of projects being done. And thankful to this money and to Measure R for all the road projects that we're getting done in Tulare County. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, Board.
Chair, motion approved and receive report.
Motion made by Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpool. Vote is unanimous. On item 42 that we took off the agenda today, that will be being brought back in about 60 days or so. So it's not disappearing, but it will be coming back in another 60 days, so I just wanted to clarify that. We have need for closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do, we have need for closed session. They're listed as Items A and B on your agenda. We do not have need for the closed sessions listed as Items C and D, and those are canceled. There will be no reports out.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes our meeting. Move to closed session. Good job, Mr. Chairman.